We'll start by turning it over to Director Durbin. Good morning.
Mayor, I believe I have some introductory remarks.
I apologize.
That's okay. Yeah.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Good morning, colleagues and everyone. Technology is constantly evolving and getting more sophisticated, while many members of our community still lack access to the benefits of the digital world. The idea of digital justice is to assure technology and information work for the benefit of the whole community regardless of who you are. Digital justice demands more transparency, accountability, and access to resources, literacy, information, and decision-making in technology and data. The Bureau of Planning and Sustainability's Smart City Program has been working for many years on information and technology issues, proactively including community members and constantly looking for equitable outcomes. The topics that we're going to see today will help our city modernize its services and assure that Portlanders can trust them. In this work session, we will hear what our city and others are doing to protect their residents' privacy and minimize the risks of technology. And we'll also hear how cities are implementing tools and strategies to make their technology and information solutions more transparent and effective. This work session includes experts and community members who are willing to share their relationship with surveillance technologies. And we will have three community members connected with grassroots work on privacy and protection of civil liberties and civil rights, who will share their experiences. Our office believes that by using responsible technology that Portland residents can trust, and by ensuring, by using technology that Portland residents can trust, and by ensuring that the community members don't feel vulnerable or threatened, we can all use resources more effectively and efficiently and contribute to the solutions for other challenges that our city is facing. So now we will hear from Director Durbin, who will share some introductory remarks about the work.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner Rubio, Mayor Wheeler, city commissioners, and members of the public that have joined us today. I'm Andrea Durbin, Director of the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. BPS leads the Smart City PDX program, which focuses on bringing digital justice to city government and for all Portlanders. And we do this work in collaboration with many other bureaus, including the Bureau of Technology Services. The Smart City PDX team at BPS is a recognized leader in innovation in local government technology and information. They are a small but mighty team. This morning, we will hear about the value of implementing privacy policy that balances the impacts and benefits of the use of technology. We will have the chance to learn from what other cities are addressing, how other cities are addressing these challenges, and hear reflections from some community members on important considerations and values we should consider. The Bureau of Planning and Sustainability is proud to support this work that envisions a future of the city that is welcoming, responsible, and uses data to inform decision-making and transparently shares that information out. Thank you for taking the time today to spend with us to learn more about this important work. The Office of Equity and Human Rights has also been a vital partner in this work, and we thank them for their guidance and collaboration. And now I'd like to introduce Jeff Selby, interim Director of the Office of Equity and Human Rights, to hear more about why modern technology and information is an equity and human rights issue. Jeff?
Thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. Thank you, Director Durbin. Thank you, community members, Commissioner Rubio, Mayor Wheeler, city commissioners. For the record, my name is Jeff Selby. I use he/him pronouns. And I am the interim Director for the Office of Equity and Human Rights. We all know of our region's troubling racist history with its treatment of tribal nations, exclusion laws, destruction of Black communities, and much harm to communities of color. And building trust is at the core of the city of Portland's privacy and information protection principles. And as a city government, we face the monumental task of putting in the work every day to earn the trust of our communities, who have been systemically excluded and institutionally oppressed. While we embrace technology to increase quality of life, productivity, reach, and capacity, we know that tech doesn't offer the same outcomes for everyone. To those who benefit from a culture where whiteness is considered by many as the default, it may be easier to miss the fact that information systems can create barriers for people in need. The Office of Equity and Human Rights was created by mandate from community and city council to help us build trust. Our team sets the city's equity policy and guides leadership with urgency and passion to ensure equitable outcomes for all Portlanders. I'm really proud of the work that has already been done on behalf of community. The Office of Equity and Human Rights has been part of the Smart City PDX efforts since the beginning of the program. And I want to recognize Judith Maury from our office for her vital and involved role in that collaboration. I also want to thank the team and partnering bureaus for their partnership in this effort. Smart City PDX has our full support at the Office of Equity and Human Rights, and we will keep collaborating to ensure we fulfill our promises to community to protect their privacy and institutionalize equity in the city of Portland. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Rubio, for your sponsorship for this work session. Mayor Wheeler, commissioners, my name is Hector Dominguez, and I am the Open Data Coordinator and part of the Smart Cities team. And we are very excited actually to bring this topic to your tables and for your revision, actually. So let me start by sharing my screen. We have a, like a couple, we start with a couple of amazing friends of our city, supporters of all the work that we have been doing around privacy and technologies. We are going to have Ginger Ambroster, who is the Chief Privacy Officer for the city of Seattle, and Brian Hofer, who is the Chair for the Privacy Advisory Commission in the city of Oakland, sharing what those two sister cities are doing with us. I really encourage everyone here to participate, engage, ask questions. We are very grateful for them to join us. And with that, so I'm going to be sharing my screen. We have prepared a, like an intro presentation on this topic. I'm going to go and move forward all the different slides. Ginger and Brian have already shared their slides with us. So I'm going to be moderating in collaboration with my colleague Judith Maury. We're going to be moving forward this work session. And with that, let me share my screen first. All right, so. Excellent. So now let me introduce my colleague Kevin Martin for a quick revision of what the Smart City PDX program has done in the years.
Thanks, Hector. And thanks, everybody. Really appreciate the time today. I am Kevin Martin. I manage the Smart City PDX program in the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. I use he/him pronouns. Wanted to first talk about a little bit more why we're here today. Really want to thank Commissioner Rubio and Director Durbin and interim Director Selby for their remarks. I think they laid it out pretty clearly, why we're here and why we want to talk to you today, City Council. But wanted to sort of put a fine point on it, that we're here to share the work and really talk about the need for it. And it's really meant to be a discussion. So I think about half the time today we have for discussion with you all. We have some questions to prompt that discussion if we need it, but really want to hear from you about your priorities in this work and your concerns. We're at the beginning of this process and really want to use this time with you all now to shape it as we dive into the actual policy development in partnership with community. And the other thing I wanted to say upfront, just to avoid confusion, is that we just want to acknowledge that the conversation around body-worn cameras, that is a separate process with a separate policy outcome. We are not talking about that within the scope of the surveillance policy that we'll be talking to you about today. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that that is a separate process. It's not within the scope of our work. And then I want to spend a few minutes, just giving you a little bit of background on the Smart City PDX program. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on this. Honestly, this could be really a separate discussion that we should be having with you all around the history of the program and what did it, why we're in the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability and sort of the motivations for our work. But I did want to talk about us being focused on people and equity from the beginning, really since the inception of the program. And as Jeff mentioned, that being a very strong partnership with Office Equity and Human Rights from day one. And we've understood from the beginning that step one in building this program is really assessing community priorities and building community trust. And that starts with a strong policy foundation. And, you know, we've looked at what other cities have done and looked at innovation and data programs and smart city programs in other cities. And a lot of those programs have failed because they did not build that foundation and they did not build that community trust. And so from the beginning, we've really wanted to learn from that and ingrained those things in the work we're doing here in Portland. And, you know, that policy foundation, when we talk about surveillance policy, a lot of times that gets interpreted as taking things away or being anti-technology. And we really feel it's the opposite of that. Better data and privacy governance is foundational to modernizing the city. We need to have these policies in place to be a trusted and effective user of data. And when I look at the council priorities of community safety, houselessness, livability, economic recovery, better, more innovative solutions to those things will require data to better understand them and better data to assess the solutions to those problems and how effective they are. And so I really see these policies as enabling the city to modernize and enabling the city to use data and technology to address our biggest problems. And so it's not a negative, it's a positive and responsible use of technology. It's really the goal. Technology and data is really the goal and outcome here. And if we want to increase our use of data and tech, privacy policies are really inevitable. We are trying to do this proactively. And if we don't, someone else will do it for us. You know, legal action against the city, some policy that's brought to us from the outside. We really are trying to get in front and shape a policy that really works for the city, for city council, for our community in a proactive way. And that's why we want to get in front of you all today and talk about this coming policy development work. Hector, can you jump to the next slide? So I'm just going to run very quickly through the work of the program so far. This has, you know, been a pretty deliberate, intentional, and foundational kind of body of work since 2017, starting with our open data ordinance. Portland was the first city to sort of declare its support of open data way back in 2009 under Mayor Sam Adams. We picked that back up in 2017 and really recognized that we wanted to start this program with a focus on data sharing and transparency and to build on Portland's open data leadership. In 2018, we were the first smart city program to really declare explicitly that the priority of the work is frontline communities and specifically Black, Indigenous, and disabled community. That really shaped all of our work from there and led to the Privacy and Information Principles in 2019, which was a resolution to essentially develop a privacy policy for the city. Hector's going to get a little bit more into those specific privacy and information protection principles on the next slide. And that led to the face recognition policies in 2020. And we started with face recognition because of a community push to act quickly before that technology was in widespread use. And that's because at the time in 2020, that technology was recognized to have inherent racial bias and really recognized by city council in a unanimous vote for those policies that technologies with inherent bias were not appropriate for use by the city or really in public areas of the city. And that was a groundbreaking policy. We were the first city in the world to regulate the use of face recognition by private entities in public spaces. And we were able to act on that technology because we knew about it. But that process really made us recognize that there's a lot of things that we're not going to know about. Technology changes very quickly. And the approach of addressing technologies, technology by technology is neither sustainable, efficient, or practical. And so that policy also directed us to look at a more comprehensive approach to how we deal with things with the surveillance component, which is why we're doing the work that we're doing today. Hector, I'm going to turn it back over to you to walk folks through the privacy principles.
And actually, Kevin, I'm going to jump in on that. Good morning, everybody. Excited to be here and talk about this important work. In 2019, we passed Privacy Principles. This was one of the first things we brought to council from Smart Cities project. And as you can see, you can see what the principles are. And particularly, it's important to understand that transparency and accountability is the principle that is really driving us. It drives this work that we're doing right now around the, around the, having a process for surveillance technologies. And as you can also see on the right are the city's core values that were adopted last two years now, I think, ago, almost a year and a half ago in the Juneteenth proclamation. Could we move to the next slide? Thank you. So what are surveillance technologies? Surveillance technologies are ones that can track, monitor, act, behavior, activities, or information from a specific individual or group for the purpose of gathering information, influencing, managing, or providing direction. This is the, this is the definition that we are currently using. Can we move to the next slide? Thank you. Oh, I was too quick. Sorry. I jumped the gun. The thing to know about, I mean, I think the word surveillance brings to mind a lot of stuff for us. And the fact of the matter is that their surveillance technology can be very benign. Examples of those technologies include security cameras, automatic license plate readers, drones, connected mobility, body-worn cameras. Although again, we are not going to be discussing those today. Those are on a separate policy track. And what we're going for is not to look at any specific technology, but rather to look at a process to assure transparency and accountability. So we, we are, the important thing is that the community knows, and we know that there has been a process. So if we want to use technology, it goes through a screen that says, what are the risks to privacy? And you calculate the benefits and the risks, and we all know what's going on. And it's also important, I think, because there are going to be issues with technology that are really going to become ethical issues that our leadership is going to have to grapple with. And so one of the things I think is really great also about this policy idea is that it would elevate those questions when we really have to look at, what is the community benefit versus the intrusion into privacy of Portlanders? And that, I believe, is a conversation that needs to happen publicly with our elected leaders. And I'm going to turn it back over to Hector.
Thank you, Judith. Yeah, and with that, so what is it taking to the belt of this policy? We believe in, in public participation and public involvement, particularly when we're talking about surveillance technologies. So we want those who are directly impacted by the implementation, the use of technologies to be part of these conversations. And, you know, right now, we are going through two years of COVID isolation uncertainties. Everybody is in alarm mode and it's been exhausting for everybody. So doing public engagement has been challenging. However, we are trying and doing our best. We are also finding excellent community partners here and there who are collaborating with us, local people who are very interested in these topics as well. We started the community involvement back in June of this year after we developed an engagement plan just to help us to figure out how we can approach to those impacted, who are really impacted. So then one of the very first things that we learned was people need to know what we're talking about. Just like the purpose of this work session, we need to put out there a very clear and accessible what surveillance technology is, how this emerging technology, when we are talking, you know, when you were talking about artificial intelligence, what that means when we're talking to somebody who is just going through all these different crises or renters who are trying to figure out the next month, you know? It's challenging, definitely. So we are trying to develop all these accessible materials, videos, documents, trying to approach to communities to see what's the best way to talk to them. And with that, so we have developed a public panels. We have developed also, we are creating spaces for code design and just to figure things out, to start hearing what the community is, concerns are, and whether the realities also live out there. So with that, we have divided our public engagement in four sections, where we, the first one, community, so we started back in June. And then right now, this work session is a milestone, which is going to trigger now the starting the development, the development of the policy itself. So we are planning to have some events open to everybody where we can actually going to be drafting that policy through a participatory policymaking process. At the end, so we are expecting to have a draft of these policies sometime in April, May, that we could distribute across the city, including your offices, commissioners. And then after that revision, we hope to bring a policy sometime in early, in summer, early summer, hopefully. So that's the process that we have. So what is the type of stories that we're hearing from the community? So these are just quotes that we extracted from the last event that we organized in December. And community are concerned about everything around privacy and even things that, you know, involve their family, that the city may not have jurisdiction on, like schools, for instance, like transportation and so on. But we are also hearing how, like, the use of bike down, parking meters, where the cameras are located. And we noticed that there is like an absence of understanding all that. There is some transparency barriers there that we need to, like, go over and build all that infrastructure and capacity. So and with that, so we keep the community very, very present in this process. So with this quick introduction, and probably when I leave it over, but let me introduce now the, this couple of great people that I really appreciate and admire in their expertise. So first, let me introduce to you Ginger Ambroster. She is the Chief Privacy Officer for the city of Seattle. She actually was, the city of Seattle has the first effort in the nation for a citywide privacy program that started to be shaped back in 2015. And was Ginger who was putting together all that. We have witnessed the whole process and learned a lot from that. So she is responsible for overseeing the privacy program and leading the privacy team in ongoing policy and process development and execution. So she's applying knowledge on privacy laws applicable to municipal government. Her team also engages with the stakeholders within the city government, the advocacy community, and the public to seek input and drive awareness of the program. So Ginger, please join us in this conversation.
Hi, and thank you so much for inviting me. I have to take a moment and tell you how fabulous Hector is, how much I've enjoyed working with him. I remember our working session, it must have been in 2019, attending a public event where you invited the public to have conversation about privacy and privacy principles. And I thank you for welcoming me. I'm happy to have this conversation today. I could talk to you all day, but I know you have other things on the agenda. So I'm going to give you a brief overview of our program and the division that I'm in, with the other work that I've taken on since assuming the role of Chief Privacy Officer. And hopefully, this will help inform some of the decisions you are making about your program. Let me say first that the idea of starting with principles was one that I came to really value. It's the last time you're all going to agree on what you're talking about. Principles are the important part and the foundation, just like policy is. But it's easy then to get caught up in concerns about different details. As Kevin was mentioning, playing whack-a-mole by legislating against certain technologies is limited in how fast you can respond to how fast those technologies are coming up. So principles and foundation are important because we just don't know where this technology is going to take us. So let me dive in, happy to answer any questions along the way. And I think we'll have Q and A at the end as well. So I used to just do privacy. Now I do other things. So our division is under the Department of Information Technology, largely because we don't have a central administration office that can kind of help with this and because we have access to data and systems and are responsible for that foundational computing layer. So my division is called Data Privacy Accountability and Compliance. And these are the programs that I'm responsible for. I'm just going to focus on privacy today because that's where surveillance lives. Those kind of go together. But I also have open data. I have the Citywide Public Records Act program, and I have data governance, as well as, and I mentioned, open data, that they all seem to go together. The focus of my division is around data and public trust and how do we use data in an accountable manner, in an ethical manner? And how do we ensure that we are using the public's data appropriately? So from there, next slide, Hector, we'll go into privacy a little more. So the privacy program was envisioned as a joint council, mayoral, executive endeavor around the public's concern about how surveillance technologies are being used in the city. But it was also an understanding of how much data that the city is collecting. And I like to tell people, we have somewhere around 20 petabytes, which is something like 20 million four drawer cabinets, if you were to put it in paper form. It's so much data that we collect in the course of giving and providing services to the city. This became the concern of many people involved in privacy. So the mission of this particular team is to build trust about the use and management of personal information that we collect from the public, increasing transparency, creating internal data governance, legal compliance, third-party data accountability, and complying with our surveillance ordinance. The first version of that ordinance went into place in 2014 in response to concerns about social media analytic tools that the police had acquired and was revamped in 2017 to reflect technology by definition that tracks, monitors, analyzes individuals and their movements in a way that could impact their civil liberties. That's something I didn't see on your definition. I don't know, it's probably where you're coming from because I know almost all of this comes from a data ethics and equity justice perspective. But that's part of our definition. So next slide, please. By the numbers, what does this mean? We're not just looking at surveillance technologies. Our privacy program, based on our own privacy principles, of which we have six, takes a look and reviews all the technology acquisitions and projects that we have going at the city. And we've done probably over 4,000 of those since 2017, when we put our program in place, tracking and monitoring those events. We have a data champion network. We have 63 different data champions across the city. These are our allies in our departments. We're federated, probably like you are. Departments run themselves with their own missions, but we have implanted in each of them one or two, and sometimes more, champions that we meet with once a month to share our and evangelize the issues around data privacy and surveillance and protection of the city's public's data. We've answered, oh, probably over 200 responses from the public. We also have a part of that. So that's our operational use. We do privacy reviews on everything we acquire. We offer awareness and training on an annual basis, and we operate with a network of champions to help us evangelize. We're only a few of us, four people manage this program. We need a lot of legs and minds out there helping us. In terms of surveillance, these numbers are, we're still working on a few of these. We have identified about 27 technologies that we put on our master list that we said, these meet our definition of surveillance according to our ordinance. And we're working down that list. It's a retroactive review of each of these. At this point, we probably done closer to 15 public events, although we've been curtailed also in this time of COVID. Many of them are online now. We've done quarterly reports, annual reports that the CTOs required around equity. And the CERD refers to the Surveillance Impact Report that we have to do on any technology that meets the definition of surveillance. It's a very active area, and I'll go into a little more detail about some of the numbers around that. And then in terms of special projects, what else do we do? We do annual training. We have over 12,000 employees. We hope to hit 90% completion at the end of this month, which is, by the way, Data Privacy Day is the 28th of this month. We provide guidebooks and playbooks on how to do things in a privacy protecting manner. We do risk analysis for very high-risk acquisitions or projects. We do a privacy impact assessment, which we then publish online for transparency sake. And finally, I do conferences. We do all kinds of things where we can help other municipalities as they're trying to meet their goals around privacy. And if you don't mind doing the next. And one thing I wanted to let you know about. And one thing I wanted to let you know about running a program and, and putting policy in place will require that you have a process to make sure you're reviewing and monitoring and documenting the acquisitions you make and the reviews that you're doing. And I'm just going to put it out there that we use a very, very collaborative tool called One Trust. It allows us to conduct a review, build our criteria, document what we've determined about a technology. So go ahead, Hector, one more good slide. This allows for us to consistently document the decisions that we make about technologies. And I can't really put that into more, it's very important to be consistent. I think accountability also requires that we be consistent about what we're looking at, criteria we use and, and determinations we make about different technologies. So this is just a list to give you an idea of all the departments we work with and all those four thousand reviews are documented in the system. Go ahead. It also allows us to say, where are we and how are we working on this? One of the important things when you get a, a program in place is to be able to talk about your progress. What are we actually accomplishing? And you do this with performance metrics and numbers. And I'm just telling you, you're, you're aways from this because you're still building this out. But keep in mind, how do I present our progress? How do I talk about what we've accomplished? So how many assessments, assessments have I done? Where are we in them? We are just turning on risk identification so that we can talk about relative risk of a project and with the mitigations we put in place, how do we decrease that? So just giving you some ideas, we, we are wanting to be able to, to be able to talk about how this program is actually moving along and helping you meet your goals.
Ginger, I see from your card this is kind.
Oh, yes, please. Yes.
Thank you, Hector, and thank you so much, Ginger. A, a few slides back and I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out where the process begins, right? I understand that Seattle operates differently than Portland, but I'm, if, if you could give me a scenario, so for example, every, in the city of Portland, every bureau pretty much buys its own technology to our, to our chagrin. And by the time it gets to the city council level, we may not be as excited as the people who actually purchase the technology themselves. And so, so I'm curious as to how do you, what is the process you use at the front end? So that we're not using buyer's regret at the back end to say, Dawn, I wish I'd asked X, Y, Z.
We are a little different in that we consolidated our information technology acquisition and management. So we have, IT is where you go to buy stuff. What that allows us to do is to put this kind of rigor and review over anything that's acquired. You don't get to buy it till you go through me and the security team to ensure that it's appropriately vetted against privacy and surveillance. So that is helpful. Now, that doesn't stop people with credit cards. That doesn't stop people with blanket contracts. There's other ways to acquire things. People can buy drones and I'll never know about it if they put it on a card. But what we do do is make sure that all folks know, because we have annual privacy and security training, that any acquisition, anything that is brought into the city that collects data about individuals needs to be reviewed. So we have the leg up in that our acquisition and our purchasing process leads us through this process. So for example, Parks decided they needed a new people counter technology for community centers. We got to know who's in here. And so that project came to us because we are consolidated and that's where projects go. And we were able to work with them to mitigate risks around identifying individuals. Really, you just want to know maybe children and adults and you want to know maybe when they go in and out of a door. You don't need to track them throughout the entire facility. But we were able to work with them to mitigate against some of the, the privacy risks that could happen with people counter and identification software. That, that actually solution even could go to facial recognition and we were able to help them say, no, we don't want to do that. All we want to know is this blob is this tall and this blob is this tall, probably a child and an adult. We know who's in the building. That's the kind of review we do on those kind of projects. So some of these.
Great example. I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, Hector. That's, that's really a great example. And I think for us, it is our Technology Oversight Committee that is made up of volunteers who don't look at all our technology projects, but, but definitely they have a major role in the big technology project. So we're not where you are yet, but I'm appreciative of learning from your experience.
I, I think a big part of this is the privacy awareness training that we do. And, and it, it's very gratifying. We've had a few departments come back and say, wait a minute, someone just sent us information. This is, doesn't King County know that, don't they have a privacy program? They just sent us a bunch of information we shouldn't receive. So we know it's effective. And it helps people be aware of our obligations around privacy and surveillance. So the, the privacy champions, the champion network that we've built, it sounds like your volunteer network, help identify those projects that are occurring that you may not have oversight of until late in the game, that they can help raise up those issues and make sure that the individuals making those technology acquisition decisions and project decisions are aware of the obligations that you're putting in place around surveillance and technol, and privacy.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So let's see, where were we? That helps you a little bit with where we are. Let's talk a little bit about resources. I think this, you're okay, go to that, yeah, right here. So what does it take to run this? Once you've determined that you have a program that's looking at surveillance and privacy and you put it in place and you're reviewing and you're helping educate around privacy obligations and principles. For us at the city, we have four FTE that do this work. And then there's all the, the privacy champions that help us really get it done at, at the individual level. Our, our software runs at about sixty K. In terms of surveillance, the work that we've done on just looking at the retroactive list of technologies that we identified that meet the definition, half of which were in police, others were in transportation, kind of smart city technologies, others were in city light and fire. About four hundred hours annually for the first four years, first three years. It's, it's been quite a, quite a thing, largely because of how our ordinance was written, which may be a, a separate conversation when you get to there. It's taken us four years. We're not quite complete. I think it's been a lot of effort for retroactive technologies. And I might suggest a path that maybe is an alternative one, which actually is Oakland. I'm very, in many ways, envious of Brian's structure because I think it is less of a heavy on the back and doing review of what you are doing and very much proactive about what should we be doing around surveillance technologies? Kind of picking up the argument instead of what have we been doing wrong, what should we be doing? So talk about that in just a moment. We also require as part of our, our ordinance, an annual audit. The Office of Inspector General will look at the ones from police. The Auditor's Office looks at the non-police ones. It's a more or less unfunded mandate for a pretty heavy-duty look at are we meeting our obligations around the surveillance ordinance? And in this time, new technologies have largely been on hold. And I don't know if that's really the, I don't think that was ever the objective. I think as we mentioned and Kevin mentioned at the beginning, we got to keep moving on technology. We have to do it with an eye to technology, helps us get our work done. We don't want to put technology in place that threatens the, the security, safety, privacy, civil liberties of our, of our residents. And I think the next slide. Yeah. So I could answer a million questions if I may offer just a, a, a perspective. We have a city ordinance that's been in place, as I said, since twenty seventeen and mandated that we come up with a list of technologies that meet the definition. We only had about six weeks to run that audit. We ended up with twenty-nine technologies and got down to about twenty-seven. It's a pretty heavy lift to answer the fifty-two or so questions that must be answered in the Surveillance Impact Review. It takes about nine to ten months to run a review, including the public engagement piece. We have a working group that also engages and it's an external group with ACLU as a member. We have members of different communities represented who may be adversely impacted inordinately and disparately by surveillance. I, I think that we have a heavy bureaucratic load on this part of the review. And for that reason, I'm really excited you're going to hear from Brian Hoffer. I think Oakland has a lighter approach, which probably is a little more tech-friendly in terms of how can we use technology and meet our obligations? And I, I, I would encourage you to consider that road. I can give you more detail if you have questions or if you get to this place where you want to talk more about Seattle's ordinance. We're hoping this year to have a view of this, now that we have new leadership in place to say, is this, is this doing what we wanted it to do? I don't think it's ever bad to be reviewing technologies that can be questionable, but can we do it in a way that is not so expensive and not so resource intensive? That's what I would say. So what questions can I answer from, from any of you?
Well, I, I think you were pretty thorough. I, I'd like to hear the rest of the presentations and then when we get into the, the Q and A section, but that was a very thorough presentation and I appreciate it.
You're welcome. I'm glad it was helpful. I will hang out here and have an opportunity to listen to Brian.
Well, thank you so much, Ginger, for all the support that you have given us through the years. Really, we appreciate all that. Next is our friend and also longtime advisor supporter, Brian Hoffer. Brian, he's currently the Chair for this City of Oakland's Privacy Advisory Commission since two thousand sixteen. He is also the Chair and Executive Director of Secure Justice, which is a nonprofit organization based in Oakland, advocating against state abuse of power and for reduction in government and corporate overreach. Brian has presented his work on privacy and protection of civil liberties and civil rights at conferences, panels, academic institutions, public spaces and municipalities like ours. So with this very short introduction, let me give the voice to Brian.
Great. Thank you, Hector, and thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. It's great to see some familiar faces and so it's a pleasure to hear about Ginger and the amazing work that Seattle is doing. Definitely want to point out and, and, and recognize that Seattle and Portland exceed California in community outreach. You guys definitely make it more of a priority and so want to lift you up doing that. Ginger and I did not coordinate, but it's kind of going to work out well, I think. I'm going to get into the framework a little bit more practically that we worked on in the Bay Area. We all follow the ACLU model. We have seven jurisdictions in California. I've co-authored five of the frameworks. I'm also consulting with San Diego, which is one vote away from doing a Oakland-style Privacy Commission and Surveillance Vetting Ordinance. And I've also recently been appointed to the L.A. Police Commission as Subcommittee to create a similar framework to help vet these things. And I really want to add a, a plus one to everything Kevin Martin said. I think he framed this scenario perfectly about why you want to do this and what the potential benefits are. In Oakland, when I first became an activist in twenty thirteen, as you see on this first slide, this Domain Awareness Center was presented to the public two weeks after Edward Snowden hit the front pages. Oakland had no privacy policies in place at all. We've had a police department under a federal consent decree now for nineteen years. We've had a lot of negative energy was in town from Occupy Oakland and it badly. So to be hit with this and, and literally no privacy policy existed caused a lot of public outrage, is a very robust system. You know, today, I think there, you know, most people call these real-time crime centers. And I do want to highlight and, and hope you folks understand that we often vet these technologies independently, but they really do create big systems of surveillance and, and smart city applications in, in a urban metropolitan area. If you could go to the next slide, Hector, please. You could go ahead and skip that. So after a lot of colorful international news generating protests, we ended up dramatically scaling the project back and we got a temporary privacy committee to create a, a, a policy for what remained. And it quickly became apparent that this was going to be an ongoing problem. We were constantly going to see new surveillance technologies and so we needed a framework to, to vet these things so that we could get the appropriate uses while hopefully mitigating the, the potential harms. And so we convinced the council to create a permanent body. And shortly thereafter, the ACLU released their model, CCOPS, Community Control Over Policing Surveillance. We have one appointee from every district in, in Oakland and the mayor also has an appointee. We're all volunteers. We have different skill sets, some are like civil rights attorneys, data scientists, AI specialists, hardware and software folks. We have a former, a former OPD law enforcement officer. So we have a pretty broad perspective of folks that, that handle the vetting of these technologies and, and I'm about to describe the framework in, in a second. I believe Hector shared the fact sheet with you folks and I just really want to highlight, you could try to do this without a, 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 a reviewing body. As Ginger mentioned and as I can tell you from my work all across the country, if you do it that way, the administrative burden is actually higher. There is, there is a learning curve, especially to departments that don't generally think they have surveillance technology, don't really understand the concerns, they don't know how to write a policy. You know, the police are generally used to more scrutiny, so they don't need a lot of that handholding, but other folks do. It's also just really hard to keep up with the pace of technology. You folks know, you know, most of you are probably not surveillance technology experts. You certainly aren't going to get more capacity if you just enact the framework, but don't actually have a reviewing body to help you. So a lot of the goals the original ACLU model was supposed to achieve, I don't think it's working well without a, a reviewing body. And most of the Bay Area now and, and San Diego are going to have a, a reviewing body of subject matter experts to provide recommendations to the electeds. Hector, if you could go to the next, thank you. So our jurisdiction, we provide advice to, to the city council. We're advisory only. We don't have unilateral authority on anything. We created the Surveillance Ordinance. We submit annual reports. We might comment on federal or state legislation. You know, with the election of Donald Trump, there's a lot of immigration concerns and data sharing with federal and state partners. We had to look at a lot of that stuff. We also just create a, a public forum, you know, we are formal, we are open, subject to the open meeting laws, just like a city council, but it's a little bit more casual in that people feel more comfortable coming in and, and sharing their concerns with us or their desires. So it is a form of public outreach, but I still don't think it's as good as it should be. And I do think Portland and Seattle do better about going to where the people are rather than what Oakland does, which is forcing people to come to City Hall to our meetings. If you could go to the next slide, please. So our definition of surveillance technology, which is just the only part I'll highlight on this slide, is extremely broad. This is the ACLU definition and it's broad on purpose. We didn't want to constantly have to revise definition as new technologies come forward that we don't yet know about. So we, we try to be future-proof. Of course, as you can see by these words, things that we don't probably care about regulating, a tax database, for example, that might collect personal information, your permitting database at your planning department, that might meet the definition of this. So we just specifically exclude certain categories. And so that, that keeps the overall universe of technologies from getting too large. It's been extremely non-controversial in every jurisdiction to go over the excluded items list because it's clear that a lot of these things are, you know, they're benign. The civil liberties or privacy impact is just too remote to warrant any administrative burden there. Go to the next slide, please.
Could I stop you there and just ask, the, the impact report that is required, could we see a copy of that or could you just briefly tell us what's required in that impact report?
Yeah. And actually, Hector, if you just go to, go to the next slide, please. One more.
Oh, if it's, if it's coming up, go back and I, I won't interrupt you if it's, if it's part of the presentation, go ahead.
Yeah, the other, the other slide was really just the sequence, which isn't so germane to this conversation. I did, I did send Hector a real-world impact analysis and use policy from BART, which is my highest rated agency in the country. I think they do amazing work all across the board, so you can look at that. But here, here are the required categories. If you look at the fact sheet that I sent you folks, you'll see a lot of horror stories. Some are financial, San Diego's smart streetlights, they were projected to save millions of dollars. They ended up spending millions of dollars because nobody accounted for ongoing maintenance, licensing. There's all these, you know, oversights that shouldn't happen if you just had the conversation upfront. And so what this model does is force you to ask those questions upfront and here are these categories. These two documents are brought together. So upfront, if you're about to acquire something new, if you're going to borrow something from a jurisdiction, you know, or maybe it's already an existing technology you have, our models are, are retroactive, so they also apply to previously acquired tech. You bring these together and ideally, any of the red flags that are identified in your impact report get mo, mitigated by your use policy. You should be.
Brian, so this, this seems really smart. This seems like a really methodical and consistent approach to evaluating some of these technologies and it forces people to ask all the right questions and not leave any subject areas uncovered. But what, what is, where does this conversation take place? How, how is this vetted? How is it actually used? Is there a stage gate? Is there an approval process? Is there an approval process? Is there a public meeting? Where where does this information actually get vetted?
Yeah, and so I just got myself in trouble. So Hector, if you go back two slides to the sequence, the the five columns. Yeah, so uh city staff wants to acquire something new. They'll notify me as the chair to put it on the agenda. And so they would submit the impact report and the use, the draft use policy to us upfront. We review it, uh you know, we might send it back and forth a a couple of meetings. Um we're analyzing all the Bay Area jurisdictions right now.
So so it's the pack where this actually takes place?
Correct.
Okay, great.
On on average, maybe two to three meetings tops. Um and that's a little higher than I may be expected because some departments, as I mentioned, don't often navigate this and so they're just unfamiliar. So we make a recommendation to adopt or potentially suggest modifications. Then it goes to the city council, which provides another opportunity for public input and they ultimately decide, you know, yea or nay. It's not on, it's not just the prove and forget though. Every single year you come back with an annual report, you know, demonstrate like, did you achieve the stated goals? Maybe are there cost overruns? Maybe there's suggested policy tweaks, you know, maybe our retention period was too short and we need to lengthen it or vice versa. Uh so the the annual report should give you helpful insights uh for ongoing use. Or in Bart's case, you'll see in one of the annual reports I sent you, they discontinued use because the technology clearly didn't work at all. It provided no benefit. They talked to their own staff and they said, yeah, we're wasting taxpayers' money, get rid of it. So there's a little bit of a taxpayer protection component as well.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, uh go ahead and skip forward a couple Hector. Yeah, so these are the categories, uh the guardrails should be in new use policy. You know, for example, license plate readers, if the privacy impact comes from the collection of data points and more data points allows you to be able to identify someone easier. One practical way to mitigate that, have a shorter retention period. It generally is uh agreed upon that it takes three or more geolocation data points to identify someone. So maybe you shorten your retention period down to where you only have two data points. Uh that would be a practical step.
So let let me ask you a question on that, because I I obviously see the trade-off here between privacy. But I also see some legitimate law enforcement purposes here. If somebody robs a bank uh or commits some other serious crime, uh obviously through license plate readers, you can help identify that individual or where they went. How do you balance those two competing interests?
And that should be discussed during the impact analysis. Most departments um at this point have had license plate readers for a while. They should have some data, some efficacy, um some sort of historical significance to their own retention period. And so you can kind of gauge it from there and it's a little bit of trial, uh you know, uh by feel. And that's why I think the annual reports are important, because when you come back the following year, uh it may inform a a future policy amendment, you know, uh your retention period might be off a little bit or the third-party access was off. So this really is about better informed decision-making on an ongoing basis by providing more information to you. You can see insights a little better that will inform hopefully a better result as to public safety. You know, a lot of folks are not used to doing a cost-benefit analysis when it comes to surveillance technology. And so that part is a little unique for them. There is some handholding, uh certainly, you know, uh at at the beginning. But there aren't too many new technologies uh out there, certainly on the smart city side there will be. But on the police side, most of the of the technology is is pretty consistent uh in use. You know, we've got enough research to kind of show you probably where the sweet uh spot is um without really um negatively impacting any public safety use.
I I appreciate that and I appreciate your your mentioning it's an evolving process and that's that's what we want to be is an organization that evolves. Thank you.
Yep, yep. Go ahead onto the next.
Mayor made me think of another question. I wasn't going to go here, but since the mayor did, um I'm starting to hear a lot about uh sound technology that is supposed to uh alert police to gunshots. Um and there's uh extreme views on whether that is a total waste of money and resources or not. Have you had to analyze that that technology um in your commission? And if so, what was the outcome of that?
Yeah, um Oakland is a legacy customer of ShotSpotter, which is the dominant gunshot detecting technology in the country right now. From a privacy perspective, I think the concerns were vastly overstated. You know, it is an acoustic sensor, a microphone, but in out of millions of incidents, it's maybe recorded a human voice, you know, four or five times. And they have made significant changes to the technology to even minimize that from happening. So from a privacy perspective, I'm not seeing a big concern. Efficacy has been a question. Um there were a lot of false positives early in ShotSpotter's career. We have received one annual report in Oakland and uh the data was supplied by OPD itself and showed that we didn't make any arrests, which is a concern. On the flip side, we got seventy guns off the street. Uh we rendered medical aid to forty-five individuals where no one had called in the gunshots, uh which is a big problem in Oakland. A lot of people just gave up reporting uh police, uh sorry, uh gunshots to the police. So some of these individuals may have died uh if police hadn't been sent there by an alert and and first aid was rendered. So those are the factors that you would kind of uh weigh, you know, if we're just sending people on on wild goose chases due to false positive. You know, that's going to negatively impact public safety because you're diverting police away from from legitimate needs. But it it's it's an open question, I would say at this point.
Thank you for that, yeah, because I would say wouldn't it would have probably been better since there were no arrests to send medical personnel to provide medical aid? But again, uh depending upon who's collecting that data and who's making uh analysis about who who shows up uh in our first responder system. So yeah, uh uh thank you. I'm glad to hear that you're having that conversation. I'm sure we'll be having it soon.
Yeah, and we actually are following you guys with macro and some of the other programs, so I expect our practices may change there as well. Could you go to the next slide Hector, please? So and this is the annual report that it provides a summary. And I put this text on the right-hand side just to make sure, because I'm usually the guy that goes in and has to warm up the administrative staff when these things begin. And the concerns that I've heard have never changed. They're always the same, you know, about the administrative burden or paperwork. But law enforcement is is understandably concerned that it might reveal certain methods or or interfere with active investigations and that has never been shown to be true. Uh this requires a summary of information, you know, it's top-level information. Maybe your license plate reader might say, uh you know, you had a thousand hits. You know, that can't be reverse engineered to interfere with any specific investigation. You provide information in the aggregate. So I I just want to, you know, definitely make that clear. If you look in the fact sheet, because I kind of described how uh lengthy some of these documents are, because the administrative burden is the other concern we hear a lot. As Ginger kind of alluded to, we uh do not require as much documentation as Seattle does. Their documents are are quite voluminous. I would, I would say our our average impact analysis is about four to five pages. The use policy is maybe three to four pages. The annual reports kind of depend on the volume of the technology and I've seen anywhere from two to five pages. Uh we have not seen any significant staff uh budget requests in the seven Bay Area jurisdictions. Uh San Diego has quite a lot of technology that they've already identified. And the mayor recently uh put one FTE in his budget. So I, you know, the the inference is that they think they can just kind of incorporate uh the administrative burden, which is one extra employee so far. Oakland isn't resourced. A lot of this is falling on volunteer commissioners, which has its own problems. But uh, you know, I think both Portland and Seattle, Santa Clara County with its own chief privacy officer, they've shown how to relieve that side without costing too much money. And when you look at the flip side of, you know, litigation, if you've been sued uh over improper use of these technologies or just the taxpayer got burned because the tech didn't do what it promised, on net, it's been taxpayer uh bonus. It's been saving money. And then there are the, you know, non-fiscal benefits. Uh we, you know, have a lot of uh interesting conspiracy theories come through the Privacy Commission in Oakland and we're able to dispel those rumors by, you know, speaking to the facts and 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 vetting the technology. You know, we we are able to narrow uh the tech, uh the proposed uses. You know, there's some stuff that's just clearly not appropriate that would infringe upon First Amendment activity. And so we get rid of those and and it increases the community trust that we're going to be using these technologies appropriately. And when we, when the Privacy Commission really gives its blessing, you know, it it really calms the conversation down. We've proven ourselves to be credible. The electeds can rely on us. The public knows that we did our job. Uh we don't rubber stamp anything, you know, people say that constantly that uh we, you know, we we definitely take our job serious. And I think it shows in the work product, you know, this doesn't mean there haven't been bumps and bruises. Um some of it has to do with resources. Um some of it is also just a lot of turnover, you know, we have to train new people. But I do think this model is is the best pragmatic approach I've seen uh to regulating regulating technologies.
Brian, I just a quick time check, uh just to allow later like questions from commissioners, so.
Yeah, I I think that was about it right there.
All right, so there is a couple more, I think.
Yeah, we also followed you guys with the privacy principles. I know I sent Samuelson folks up to you and Ginger both, uh you guys were were great at speaking with them. That's finally carried down into the Bay Area everywhere. Yeah, this was a, yeah, if you go back that one slide, you know, this is something and it might not be clear on your screen, but the photo on the right has been uh blurred. And this has come up with some of the the more tech-savvy people on on our commission that have figured out uh some of these tools and and we've been able to incorporate them so that we could get, you know, appropriate uses of technology and minimize the impact. I know Seattle took an approach with that with body camera footage. They were trying to, you know, blur out videos and then post the the footage uh on YouTube. Um and so as some of these tools get um better at de-identifying, um I'm pretty excited to see how we offer uh, you know, civil liberties protections going forward.
Right. So thank you Brian, thank you Ginger for your presentations. Well, this is the time that we are planned to to have questions from commissioners, please, uh we encourage you to do so.
May I just make a comment Hector?
Yes, please.
Uh I I highly recommend you follow the Oakland model for this. I think it's a a functional uh and effective model for review of uh surveillance technologies. I think that ours uh was a good attempt, but is highly bureaucratic. I don't think I would wish the level of detail uh that that really doesn't lead to a good or productive outcome on any other city. So I posted in the chat an example. I think this is almost a four-hundred-page review with all the addendum, et cetera. And I wanted you all to be able to compare uh outlet uh out uh Oakland's output to what what we are, what we do. And I I just feel like they're much more functional. Brian, you know, I've been jealous of you for years. I think you guys have a very functional model. We're hoping to maybe nudge our our folks in that direction as well, so that's just my two cents.
Thank you Ginger. Yeah, as a matter of fact, we are actually looking at the best of you, you two. So we're trying to put together and learn from that.
Um why don't I jump in my answer, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, thank you, Jeff, please.
First, thanks for this great presentation. This is a really exciting and important policy area. I think I have about three questions slash statements, um that'll go to a couple of different folks. My first question, I think, might go to Judith, I'm not quite sure. One of the things that you folks made clear at the very beginning of this conversation is that some technologies like body cams are uh not part of this discussion. Um and I was just wondering, is that written down somewhere? How, where do we define the scope of what technologies that we are looking at?
Um, that is not written down anywhere but in our notes currently, um because we are, uh you know, we have not zeroed in on specific policy language yet. We did want to be clear because the DOJ and the city are have been, you know, working actively on the body camera issue um through the settlement agreement and uh there's a whole process going on with public involvement. Last night I was with folks planning one on the twenty-third um where we get community input. So so that's just on a completely separate track. We wanted to be clear about that. And um in terms of other police uses, we're our our thinking at this point is that they would be treated like any other bureau. If you want to acquire something, let's put it through the screen. Let's understand what the risks are, what the benefits are and um, you know, just like like transportation, water parks or anyone else.
Okay, so um and that was my question. I think in in part of your um statements, you said uh body cams and other technology technologies or some other technologies and you kind of ticked off some random ones would not be part of this conversation. But to be clear, the only thing that has been taken off the table uh so far are bo- body cams, is that right?
Yes, and I'm sorry if I misspoke and uh put those two things together. I was not a silver-tongued fox this.
Oh, uh no, you did great. I just wanted to be sure uh that I understood what was going on here. Um I think my, this next um I could try to phrase this as a question, but I think I'll just make it a statement. Um you know, at the core of the issues that we're grappling with here are privacy. Privacy is something which also exists in both um in law. Um as we move forward, one of the things that I'd appreciate is a memo from the city attorney's office defining kind of the current state of law surrounding privacy. Um there's some pieces there um that are kind of, I think there's there's some important principles we need to uh uphold to. Um I think there's some important principles that I wish were more clearly written into, for example, federal law which aren't there. I don't necessarily even know what's happening at the state level in terms of privacy. Um as a just a baseline for myself, um I would like to get a better understanding of what the legal framework here is on privacy. So I look forward to that. Everyone's shaking their head, so it looks like that's a a doable deal. My next question actually goes to our guests from Seattle and Oakland. I'm just curious about how long it takes to get a specific piece of software reviewed and through your systems. Um and here's why I I ask. I think I've been here in this job for about thirteen months at this point. Um and I'm not sure I've seen us complete any software purchase and installation um in less than thirteen months. And I recognize this will take some time too. I'm just wondering how much added time I should account for. Maybe when do we start with Seattle and then go over Oakland?
Also on the list of don't do it the way we do it, I will tell you that is one of the 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 really tough things uh of this. I I think I mentioned it takes probably nine to ten months to review uh a technology because it starts with this list of fifty-two questions, takes several weeks to get that done. Then we have public uh meetings and engagement that can take six to eight more weeks. We have a working group, similar sort of, but not as functional as what Oakland has of individuals from the outside who then have their eight weeks to look at this. And then we have, it it's it's just a a very burdensome burdensome process. And uh it has discouraged many folks from wanting to even use technologies that come close to surveillance. We spent a lot of our time figuring out, how can we make this not surveillance? What can you put in place to mitigate that concern so you don't have to go through this process? So Brian can tell you the the better side of that.
All right, hey Brian.
Yeah, uh great question. And again, I'm just going off the top of my head, but by the spring, we should be able to have our formal analysis of the Bay Area shared with you all. I would say our worst was five months. And that's with the Privacy Commission. And that was just a very controversial piece of tech that the police wanted and they themselves didn't understand it. We had to wait on the vendor to come in and clarify some things. Two to three meetings, two to three months, we meet once a month and then most of this stuff goes through.
Uh great, I I promised only three questions, but I I actually I have one more. What determines the cost of um standing up a program like this? Um you kind of listed some software, which I think costs about seventy grand. Um and you you talked about the needing need for a standing committee and whatnot. Maybe we can do Seattle, Oakland, like when we're just are trying Maybe we can do Seattle, Oakland, like when we're just trying to anticipate how much this is actually going to cost. I I don't even know how we go about penciling that out and what the sort of ongoing costs are and all that sort of stuff.
There's a lot of volunteer time, I will say that. And there's a lot of department time because as Brian said, there's time back and forth between a vendor to answer questions along the way, understanding data sharing, understanding specifics from the vendor that can take time. And not any of that is accounted for. So all I can really speak to is we have a privacy program that helps us vet things for privacy risk as well as surveillance impact. We have four people dedicated to that entire effort. One is full time on surveillance, but the rest of us contribute. And it's about 4,000 hours a year, at least for the retroactive reviews we were doing. If we ever got to a place where we were looking at new technologies, I don't think it would be quite that onerous. But that's the impact that's hard to measure is what this will do to the department that is putting a technology forward. Time for counsel is usually, you know, the time it takes to run a meeting and raise some questions. But your legislative age, your staff are going to be spending time delving into those documents. So Brian, I don't know if you've taken a look at this, it's a little different animal. Yeah.
Yeah, well, just ballpark, how much does your program cost on an annual basis?
Oh, um, my program, it probably comes in under, under, I don't know, under probably 600,000 a year because we have four people doing privacy and surveillance. Surveillance on its own would probably be closer to 250,000.
Okay, great. Hey, Brian, how about you?
My model costs nothing, but I don't recommend that. Right now, basically, because I do this for a living, I'm essentially bearing a lot of the burden during the the research. We have a CPO in name only, he was not given any assistance or a budget. We have one dedicated staffer to the commission. And so the, what I was told, the sort of prorated cost for us was about $60,000 for that year. That's the only real hard cost. I do want to highlight a lot of this is already just really incorporating existing procurement practices. So you've probably already budgeted for a lot of that. I have not seen any weird budget requests at all since June of 2016, when Santa Clara County first enacted this. As I mentioned earlier, San Diego dedicated one FTE at, I think it was around $160,000 for their implementation. So we haven't seen anything scary yet.
And one other question, Brian, I think I noticed that Seattle uses some software. I'm forgetting the name of the software it uses to kind of organize its its processes. One press, Brian, do you use One Press too?
No, we're doing stuff pretty shoestring, you know, Excel spreadsheets for tracking purposes. And and we're we're trying to get there, but we're not there.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll put my hand down and let my colleagues speak.
Commissioner Maps, just very quickly, we are actually, we have been trying One Trust for a while, just as a pilot. And we are learning also from Seattle on the benefit of the Seattle's process, their automation of of all that, at least just the privacy impact assessment is very impressive. The the expertise that they have developed through the years have really expedited and they can deliver from the start to end in just few days a full privacy impact assessment. So which is a process for the procurement of technology. So that that's something that we are paying attention and learning from them. Commissioner, how does he?
Thank you, that was a very good question and answer process. I guess for me, the, I'm reminded of where we were when we were looking at the facial recognition technology. And I just want to appreciate the thoughtfulness because as you pointed out at the beginning, we started this effort back in 2017. And every year we've actually moved the ball, I I think, in really significant ways. And nothing more significant, I think, than the facial recognition technology ban that was both public and private. That is still, as you heard at the beginning, a a world model for how you proactively put these protections in place. And we spent a lot of time explaining that we were not anti-technology. And so I'm really curious whether Seattle and Oakland are continuing to get pushback from industry as you have implemented your programs over the years.
I can answer part of that. For the most part, I think it's especially around smart technologies. I think we're seeing a shift in the industry to understand, oh, privacy. Okay, we, it's not just what can you build, it's how can you build this in a way that works with local sensibilities and legal requirements? I will say for police technology, be aware that some police surveillance technology vendors are very loath to have their information made public, even that they have customers. They don't even want you to know or publish who their customers are. And we're in a legal situation now with one vendor called Callio. I think it does recording of telephone calls that was written into their contract that we can't talk about the fact that not only can't we talk about any of the details of the technology, we can't talk about the fact that we are a customer and now we're in legal problem because of the surveillance process. One might argue we should not ever be in a contract situation where public records are not being taken into account because everything should be public, right? State of Washington, we don't have too many exemptions. But that is something to be aware of. One of the, one of the things you may hear from police especially are if we talk about this, we may be exposing the efficacy of that technology in future. We may be giving the bad guys good information that would be helpful and or vendors may kick back too. So it's just, it's something to be aware of.
Yeah, and I would hope that our city attorneys would actually not approve any contracts that would prohibit public access to public documents. So I I I I'm going to hope that that would be so. What about you, Brian?
Yeah, I skipped over it in the slide, but you can look at the Oakland model. We have a provision that prohibits any such non-disclosure confidentiality provisions. If this is a transparency ordinance, things need to be transparent. We have strangely not seen a lot of industry law. The bans against facial recognition in San Francisco, Oakland and Berkeley all were enacted in rapid fire and they were preemptive. Nobody was actually using that technology at the time. And I think industry, there was also state legislation in California. I think they just read the room, you know, they were, they just decided, all right, this is not the time to go forward and be aggressive. And so they've been surprisingly to me, quiet. We haven't had to, you know, had any undue influence.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
May I jump back in here? This goes to whomever in the audience who has something smart to say. As I look at this issue area, it seems like there's in some ways a paradox at the core of what we're trying to do. There is, on the one hand, we have transparency. And the other hand, we have privacy. And so, you know, I know we have information systems out there that collect people's names as they interact with local government. And to what degree are, at the same time, because we collect them, it also means that we have the potential to hand that out to the public and publish it on the web. On the other hand, I can totally imagine plenty of scenarios where, you know, the members of the public would, you know, maybe not want their names revealed because they're complaining to City Hall. Does anyone have any thoughts on how this council or any council kind of navigates that tension and finds the right balance?
Ginger, please.
I I can say that that is the dance and the dance is complicated also by the fact that technology in service of catching the bad guys puts you in a tough spot around the tension around surveillance generally, using my information in some way that can curtail my civil liberties. And so to do that, I think, is to include, the best thing you can do is what you do already. And Hector's done such a good job of is including the public in the conversation to ensure that you're capturing all the disparate viewpoints and concerns about this, including police and the folks that are tagged with making sure that that we have a safe community. And and I guess I would only offer this other really difficult thing at this juncture. And I thought this even before the events of the last couple of years, that our legislation was put in place to try to legislate trust with police. And that just isn't how that works. You cannot put laws in place to make you feel trustful. And the examples I give is if you have a significant other, a spouse, and you think they're somewhere they shouldn't be, you can check their phone and you can check their email, but that's the moment in time. It's not going to give you a trustful feeling that person's doing what you you think they ought to be doing or what they committed to be doing. And so I think that's the thing to be aware of as well. And I think the way that you guys engage the public in these conversations will really inform how you go forward. There has to be an element of we trust each other to do the right thing. How can we trust and verify? So I just put that out there. And the and the and the dichotomy between transparency and privacy exists. You have different laws. I have never delved into your privacy laws for the state of Oregon. We we have no privacy in the state of Washington. So my job's really hard as a privacy officer because once we collect it, it's out there. So it's making sure people are aware that that's what's happening. And then the only other protections you have are around, you know, police activity and their laws and protections around, you know, information that's being gathered in the course of an investigation. So I guess those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
I think it gets back to the basis of purpose specification. You know, what is the goal you're trying to achieve? What sort of data do you need to collect to achieve that goal? How long do you need to retain it? And as you start to ask those questions and get answers, you'll probably start collecting less data. You'll probably start retaining it for shorter periods of time. And so that helps solve that dance that Ginger was just describing. Some of the data collected isn't necessary to use the surveillance technology. It's just superfluous. But it causes a privacy impact. And so if you start to get rid of those things, you can still get the good uses of those technologies while mitigating the potential privacy impact.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much for everyone's participation. I didn't say you can mayor.
No, it's, it's, it took me 20 minutes to figure out how to make the hand thing work. The, first of all, I just want to say how much I have appreciated this presentation. This is fantastic and it it makes me think about how we partner with other jurisdictions because surely every major city in America is thinking about these issues and how to navigate the trade offs between collection of data and usefulness and maintaining the privacy that the public rightfully deserves and expects. Is there a national discussion? Is there a national table? Is there something through the Conference of Mayors? Is there somewhere nationally where we're having these conversations about what the right broad approaches are? Is this still very much a patchwork of individual jurisdictions?
There are different spaces where these conversations are happening. But as you point out, the conversations are fragmented. There are different layers. For instance, we as a staff, we participate in a number of spaces organized by usually organizations who are working on on this issue, like privacy issue, like the Future of Privacy Forum, for instance. They they have organized for like a number of years now these leaders, civic leaders on privacy issues. And cities from the Bay, Seattle, cities from the East Coast are participating and we all share this expertise. But this is just mostly at the staff level. And then more at the legislation level, there are some other spaces here and there. At the federal level also, things are happening. But but yes, still, there are the connections are not quite there yet, I think.
Well, that's that's an area where maybe we can collaborate with you. And if offline, there's some suggestions you have for Portland city staff about where where we could be connected and maybe some of the successes that Oakland have had or Seattle has had. If if there's ways we could be more plugged into that conversation, I know we'd like to be.
Thank you. I personally really appreciate that. And I think on behalf of our team, we do, we do appreciate also.
Great, thank you. Does that complete everything Director Durbin or is there more?
No, not yet. Well, apologies, we were over a living of time, but this is just from the expert's point of view. We're going to have a five minute break. Well, let's say, let's come back at 11:00 and then we're going to hear very quickly from community members who are also, we want to create a space for them to share their experience. So we have three community members joining us.
Great, all right, then we will take our colleagues a recess. Why don't we say until five after 11:00? If that works, that gives us an even 10 minutes. So we'll we'll reconvene at five minutes past 11:00.
I'll say goodbye, thank you all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Ginger.
Take care.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Thank you, Mayor Wheeler. Excuse me. So I'm very pleased and excited that we have some wonderful folks from the community who are have agreed to come and use their time to share some of their perspectives around the work that we're doing and the importance of it. And first up is Sarah Hemid. And Sarah is an abolitionist and organizer working to build community defense against carceral technologies. She's built and worked on campaigns against predictive policing, private-public surveillance partnerships, electronic monitoring and automated border screening. Sarah has co-founded the Prison Tech Research Group in 2019, a coalition working at the intersection of technology innovation and the prison industrial complex. So Sarah, we've got about four or five minutes for you to share your perspective. Thank you for being here.
Awesome, thank you so much for having me. So again, my name is Sarah Hemid and I lead the policing tech campaign at the Carceral Tech Resistance Network. And CTRN's work focuses on building literacy and power for the, within those communities that are most often caught between this really interesting double bind where they have a vulnerability or a need for public service. But on one hand, but there's also a historically accepted diminished expectation for privacy and data sovereignty that they have to contend with. And this intersection is really important because it means that our communities are effectively having to barter their data in exchange for meeting basic needs. That means having to barter your data for free lunches. That means having to barter your data for basic healthcare. That means having to barter your data for access to mobility. Or in the case of remote monitoring for folks impacted by carceral institutions, literally having to barter your data in exchange for freedom. For the broader public accustomed to seeing this conversation framed in a really narrow way, something that Commissioner Maps brought up. This can be sometimes often disregarded or treated very flippantly because I'm someone who was brought up by the internet. So the idea that you have to like trade a little bit of privacy for services like Facebook or Google, it seems like an intractable situation. It's literally the condition I was brought up in. But including communities that are made vulnerable by structural inequality in this conversation really changes it. Because this is not just an inconvenient exchange of data for access to leisure or luxury services. This is about the coerced capture of data that you lose control over forever in exchange for things you need to live, like food, housing or healthcare. The temporality of that loss is really critical because data, once it's captured by these systems, doesn't remain in a single database unless there are prohibitions put on it, right? It moves between bureaus and agencies, between functions and contexts, and it's often repackaged and monetized and sold. So this means that in this economy of coercive exchanges, there's a profit motive to extract extremely sensitive data from vulnerable communities. Vendors make money from the surveillance appropriation of data from communities struggling to survive. Moreover, that data can come back to haunt communities years down the line in violent and horrific ways. In the past five years, we've seen data from state DMVs being used to tear apart families and incarcerate undocumented community members indefinitely. We've seen data from public health services used to criminalize low income parents and renters. We've seen data from the most mundane sensors designed for traffic safety prohibit youth from doing the most normal things like hanging out outside with their friends. Brian said something really interesting about ShotSpotter that I think cuts through some of that privacy and transparency distinction or that paradox that Commissioner Maps brought up. He said that the privacy concerns for ShotSpotter were vastly overstated because the system captured human voice so infrequently. But privacy is actually a pretty limited metric here because ShotSpotter also has an impact on the trust a community has and its sense of freedom. If communities haven't been brought along and made aware of the limitations of these systems, that means that they have no choice but to live in a state of paranoia. Paranoia means that they'll fear walking outside or congregating or doing basic things that everybody should have a right to do in a city. Paranoia means that for cities like Portland, that is proud for of its diversity and cultural of acceptance. One of the reasons that my family and I moved up here, entire categories of community members will increasingly avoid public life. The word, a word we've heard a lot today is trust. And for vulnerable communities, this loss of trust is stark and with dire consequences. If you can no longer access care with any assurance that the information will not be used against you or used to take away your children, you're forced to make pretty horrific decisions. We saw this at CTRN during early stages of COVID-19. Folks choosing literally not to seek care or get COVID-19 tests because they had no idea of doing so would impact their family members. If the pandemic has taught us anything, it's that public health is a collective effort. So denying yourself care to protect your family from other kinds of violence has stark consequences for everyone that comes into contact with you. This ordinance doesn't necessarily repair trust. These kinds of procurements and experiments have been allowed to expand unregulated for far too long for one policy to achieve that. But we can't pretend anymore. This kind of technological creep can continue to occur unregulated without directly affecting the condition of life for Portland's diverse communities. This transparency layer is, if nothing else, a firm commitment to prioritizing the safety, mobility, and freedom of all Portlanders. And this is a limited but necessary step towards preserving the democracy of Portland's civic and public life. Thank you.
Sarah, thank you so much. Well done and quickly done. Commissioners and Mayor, we're going to go ahead and have our two other speakers and then reserve some time at the end for some, for some conversation. So our next speaker is from Ramon Sosa. Ramon was born and raised in Mayan community in the rural highlands of Guatemala. He has more than 20 years of experience organizing both in indigenous communities in Guatemala and for the preservation of their languages, costumes, spirituality, and their traditions, as well as with the immigrant and homeless, houseless, excuse me, communities and day labors in the US. He's a co-founder of the Portland Immigrant Rights Coalition and it's great to see you.
Yeah, great to see you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, good morning, Mayor Wheeler and City Commissioners. She said, my name is Ramon Sosa. I work as a hotline administrator and trainer for the Portland Immigrant Rights Coalition. And thank you for inviting me today on this important topic for our community. PERC was founded in 2006, is a coalition on immigrants and refugees and social justice organizations united to bring an end to the tension and deportations of immigrant families. PERC core are of working through advocacy on immigration policy. We have a hotline, a rapid response, the protection, defense, and community education on issues of immigration justice. We have a hotline which families or friends can call in the event of a raid or if they lost ones have been taken by ICE to help them. Through our mobilization effort, we have been able to apply enough pressure on ICE to release numerous individuals, return them back to their families and their communities. During the years I have been volunteering with PERC and now as a part-time staff, I have seen how technology has played a key role to arrest and deport immigrants during the years. They told us that surveillance is the smart way for the future, but we know it's all part of the enforcement system that is attacking and harming our community and controlling the anti-deportation movement. The Biden administration is nothing different because the surveillance is growing and continues to have contracts with technology industries. It is not a surprise for us that the tech and data industry's surveillance are dominated by white people. Some examples that, programs that could still exist or no longer in Mutnomah County. When I start working or volunteering with the PERC, I saw, we discovered so many programs that they exchange information with ICE. And one of them is the Priority Enforcement Program, which has rejected by Mutnomah County because the community and the Portland Immigrant Coalition pressure. We have the State Criminal Alien Assistance Program called CAP, CARRY, ERO, Enforcement and Removal Operation, the Criminal Aliens Program, CAP. And that the CAP is like to have the presence of ICE in jails. And Secure Community was signed in 2010 in Mutnomah County. The Secure Community Program is a federal information sharing partnership with, between immigration custom enforcement and the FBI. The, the program helps to identify and document fleeing nationals through state and local law enforcement. Since 2014, ICE hold is no longer here in Mutnomah County after a lot of community pressure from PERC lawyers and immigrant community. How is that, the, this work? If you are arrested and you are an immigrant, ICE can request your local jail to hold you for 48 hours or long enough to, for ICE to pick you up, send you to an ICE detention center, and possibly deport you. But in 2014, many counties stopped honoring ICE hold in Oregon, including Mutnomah County. As you know, the, the things happen in the south of the border. By 2020, CBP was already using more than 135 drones with plans to procure 460. Nearly 600 operators were trained to fly them. And, and the agency aimed to double that number in 2021 with the training program in West Virginia. 22 of these machines can fly autonomously and have the ability to monitor what's happening on the ground. They are controlled through 100 devices since 2006. CBP has expressed interest in developing drones with facial recognition capabilities. Also, the biometric, our physical characteristic used to identify people such as fingerprints, DNA, facial recognition, voice recognition, and ID scans. DHS is rapidly expanding, expanding the types of biometric it collects and places it collects them, often without, without permission. The new border wall is no longer just a concrete and metal barrier, but instead is prowling network of interconnected system, drone surveillance, towers, license plate scanners, database, and more mean to monitor all aspect of migration and control all activity along the southeast border. The system as, as designed is intended to be total. Every person, every car, every animal trekking across the desert would raise an alarm, bringing border patrol agents and leading to more confrontation, more arrests, and more deportation. This form of using surveillance through technology is very concerning due to both to privacy concerns and to the demonstrated technical shortcomings of biometric technology. Facial recognition used by the police has already resulted in false, positive, and wrongful arrests. City council, city councils should conduct an audit of different databases in Mutnomah County where ICE exchanged information with other entities because this exchange information in jail with the police and the court, it's very dangerous for a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ramon. It's good to see you. Reminds me of our Day Labor Center days. Thank you so much for being here to talk about that. And our final speaker, and my other computer just went down. But Alan Hippolito perhaps needs no introduction. Hopefully you are all familiar with him because he's an incredible contributor to our community and leader. So Alan, we use, give your little bio for us as you start.
I will be offering up no testimony now after that introduction. No. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Alan Hippolito. I use he/him pronouns. I work for a Portland-based nonprofit named SUMA. Per our tax exempt mission, SUMA creates platforms for digital organizing enterprise and justice. I was born in New Orleans, Louisiana. My father is from the town of Tamazónchale in the Mexican state of San Luis Potosí. And my mother is from New Orleans in the United States. In the words of your friend and mine, Dre España, it's a blessing to be here with you today. To start, I'd certainly like to echo and reinforce a lot of really powerful earlier testimony, both from Romeo and Sarah, as well as from the other jurisdictions that offered many specific reasons why surveillance policy is important and identified the key considerations and processes ahead. But also here at the start, I just want to make sure to acknowledge the many BIPOC community leaders and scholars who have worked for years to raise awareness about and provide policy solutions for the unique surveillance and data extraction harms faced by low-income people, people of color, the disabled, and other communities on the front lines of technological change. Leaders and scholars like Rua Benjamin, Sophia Noble, Joy Bulamini, Shereen Mitchell, Charl McIlwain, and many others. Primarily, it should be clear that making this kind of policy is within your purview and your responsibilities today. Technology policymaking is fundamental to governing in the most basic sense of promoting health, safety, general welfare with and for Portland residents regarding matters of technology. Much like what were once new policymaking areas such as transportation, housing, or the environment, technology's impact has grown to the point where sustained public sector attention is needed. And it's important for this policy direction to be set at the council level. My hope is that Portland, like many governments, is recognizing it absolutely has to transition from reactive and episodic tech policymaking to an inclusive, transparent, and well-organized policymaking practice, as Kevin, Ginger, and others have mentioned. And it's important to note that without this transition, policy direction will nonetheless be set, but not by community working with the city and not in a purposeful or inclusive way. Instead, policies will be developed by private companies who market technology products and services, including surveillance technologies, and as Commissioner Hardesty noted, by the city staff who buy these products and services. This is a bad way to make policy. Secondarily, as mentioned earlier, the facial recognition technology bans were just the beginning of our responsibility to co-create policy with communities on the front lines of technology change. And I'd also like to speak to this responsibility. Safety and welfare are at stake, especially for low-income and people of color Portlanders. We should not be surprised. Tech folks often talk about early adopters, those who are first to see the opportunity in a new technology. It must be said, racism and inequality are the original early adopters. They take the first seats at the table anytime we create something new, turning technology into a tool that increases systemic disparities. It's well established that technological advances tend to increase disparities between the haves and the have-nots. Advantages are pressed and vulnerabilities are deepened, as Romeo shared. And so to be clear, we are talking about vulnerabilities in our frontline communities. Whether you look at national work by the individuals I mentioned earlier, a scholarship by groups like the Brennan Center or Data and Society, at Sarah's comments, or at the kind of grassroots conversations we have at the community level, low-income people, people of color, and other frontline communities in Portland and elsewhere are acutely aware of a range of digital privacy harms, but also believe that it's difficult for them to access the tools and strategies that can help them protect their privacy and personal information. And this is important, and I think we heard a little bit about this today. It's challenging for even the most tech-savvy individual to understand and counteract the different ways they might be surveilled or their data might be extracted. The reality of this challenge on the individual level, that it's incredibly difficult for an individual Portlander to stay on top of who or how might be surveilling them or their data, is why we need city policy and also why we need to build and cultivate the kind of tech capacities like those represented on Oakland's commission. Lastly, the process, many of y'all are familiar with the frontline-led process. We lifted up to address the digital divide in 2020 where community members, low-income, BIPOC, disabled, designed, and scaled a tech kit program that got thousands of devices into the hands of Portlanders at risk of digital isolation, doing so via trusted community intermediaries. This program was successful in part because it was community-led, because the city deployed its resources in support of designing and implementing a community vision. So I'd also like therefore you to view this surveillance policy's development as an extension of this viable model and as another step away from a patchwork of activities and staff spread across multiple bureaus and toward an exclusive, inclusive, transparent, and robust technology policymaking structure in the city of Portland. I'd like you to look at this surveillance policy's development as an investment in those communities on the front lines of technological change so they can lead us to a just and community-centered digital future. This is vitally important because as others have said, there are many more issues to come. Some, like facial recognition technology, will require urgent council action and a robust technology policymaking structure can help guide the council as to when and why such urgent actions are necessary. Other issues will be more suitable to a slower and more deliberate process. And the improved structure can ensure that we're centering and resourcing frontline voices in those processes as we wrestle with issues like platform accountability, shared mobility data, ultra-wideband technology, algorithmic decision-making, and on, and on and on. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Alan. And I, I see Tammy's hand. I just want to acknowledge that what Alan was talking about in terms of the community engagement model we use, we have built the community engagement around our, the work on building this policy on those same principles and are engaging with community in some, I think, pretty exciting and creative ways to co-create policy, which we will really be working on after this. Tammy, Mayor, you're from the Police Bureau, and I know, looks like you have some things you'd like to share. Then we'll wrap up.
I know that was an accident that my hand got raised. I was clicking on an email and somehow it managed to raise my hand.
Okay, no problem at all. I've had the, the hand issue as well. And we really thank you all, Council Mayor, everyone, for your attention. And I just want to, before I turn it back over to Kevin to close us out, I would just say that I think that you've seen a wide, the wide range of issues. I'm excited about the ways that we can better serve our community using tech in responsible ways so that our community feels safe and has, has both safety and a perception of safety as they live in Portland and engage in civic life in Portland. I think that, you know, if we're using, if we're gathering the information that we need to serve Portlanders in the ways in which we have been asked to do as government, that we, and we do that responsibly, that we are going to see some really great future outcomes around all this work. I turn it back to you, Kevin.
Thanks, Judith. I think you closed it out perfectly. So I just want to say thanks to everybody. Thanks to council. I know your time is valuable and really appreciate you giving us two hours. I thought the discussion was, was great. There was a couple of asks embedded in it that we will follow up with you on. But thank you, and we look forward to working with you all as we move this policy development forward.
Great presentation today. Thank you all who participated. This was great. We are adjourned.